It's gone live.
Right, while we're just ready to start the meeting, if my IT connection goes down, councillor Morell will take over as vice chairman.
Aye, aye, sir.
If yours goes down and mine goes down, you're both panicked.
Quietly.
And if you get arrested, it could be you, Glenn.
No, I've got a five minute.
Andrew, was the road busy to cross tonight?
Shocking. I have to say though, in the practice, I had to have all my windows closed because the noise from those men working at the car park was extraordinary.
All right.
A member of my household, not I, has complained because you can't sit out in the garden and hear us all think when you have direct in the garden in the morning. And the council apparently responded very positively, particularly about the working on Sunday, which was strictly against the contract of the contractors. So, yes, not only lockdown, but windows shut as well.
Right. Good evening. I'd like to welcome members, officers and public for the first virtual planning meeting for power council chamber. Can I please ask you to make sure that your microphones are muted and this will avoid interference during the meeting? So your microphones, your microphones, please. But I also ask speakers to mute their phones to go off again before the meeting. Speakers who have dialed in will be kept on the holding lobby until I request them to speak. Speakers may choose also to watch the live screen meeting whilst they are on hold. In the event that an IT speaker's IT fails, a script has been provided by the speaker and will be read out. The speaker will be removed from the meeting once the planning application has been heard and determined. I want to inform the speaker when this is about to happen. May I also remind members of the virtual meeting protocol that has been emailed to you and this meeting is now live. Before we start the formal proceedings, I'd like to take this opportunity to provide a short update in the context of the national situation on COVID-19. As a planning authority, we have strived to maintain business as usual, recognising the challenges which the current situation has presented. Officers, often working in challenging and different ways, have strived to ensure that delegated planning decisions are executed in a robust and timely manner. On behalf of the committee, I'd like to thank all the planning team for the huge efforts they have made to keep the business going. I'd also like to thank the applicants and their agents for their enormous contributions they are making to submit applications and contribute to the future growth across the borough. Throughout April, most authorities experience declining the number of planning applications received. In May, this position has turned around with significant increase in applications within the borough. This commitment and investment is crucial on many fronts, but most noted at present to develop the future local economy. May I also like to thank the applicants for their understanding as we move to the creation of virtual committees. While most planning applications are delegated to officers, some reports have had to wait a little longer to be determined as we have moved to a virtual world of planning committees. I'm advised that the applicants have shown understanding of the challenges before us and we've been agreeable to the shortest extensions of time where necessary to enable determination by the planning committee. This is a huge credit to businesses and local householders. I just wanted to judge my saying, we are now very new to holding in virtual meetings and will be grateful for your patience. For the benefit of those that serve, the council is using Microsoft Teams to bring this meeting to you and members are asked to use my team, the meeting chat function for the following: to revise of any additional apologies, to revise any declaration of interest if they wish to speak, or to confirm they are voting against or abstaining on any item after verbally stating this. The meeting chat function is only available to members, officers directly involved in the meeting, not the public. We will now to start the meeting and I'd like to take this opportunity to welcome back councillor Malcolm Ward back to planning committee after his two years as mayor and deputy mayor. Members should have received the late letters list and PowerPoint presentation and they will also have the website and agenda and reports. The meeting chat function is only available to members, officers directly involved in the meeting, not the public. We were now to start the meeting and I'd like to take this opportunity to welcome back councillor Malcolm Ward back to planning committee after his two years as mayor and deputy mayor. Members should have received the late letters list and PowerPoint presentation and they will also have the website and agenda and reports. The meeting chat function is only available to members, officers directly involved in the meeting, not the public. We were now to start the meeting and I'd like to take this opportunity to welcome back councillor Malcolm Ward back to planning committee after his two years as mayor and deputy mayor. Members should have received the late letters list and PowerPoint presentation and they will also have the website and agenda and reports. Right, we're repeating ourselves somewhere, I do apologise. Can you make certain your mics are all on mute, please? Item, agenda item one, apologies, do we have any? No. Right. Item two, declarations of interest. And I have councillor Graham Lawman, if you wish to speak, you put your mic back on, please councillor Lawman.
Yeah, I have WP 1700525, I'm a local resident but not affected any more than any other and I'm also aware of objectors. And I have the same declaration for WP 200099 and WP 2000100 and for application WP 2000244, I would declare a prejudice interest as a member of the county council planning committee that may well decide this matter later on.
Right, thank you, if you could mute your microphone. Councillor Griffiths, you have a declaration?
Thank you, Mr Chairman, mine is in relation to WP 2000244 CRA, lands the rear of 3050 Dodlington Road. This committee know that this is in my county ward and not surprisingly, I have been lobbied quite extensively on this. I will be listening to the report and the debate and voting accordingly, Mr Chairman.
Thank you, if you could mute your mic, please. Are there any apologies? Sorry, any more decorations? Right, there'll be no further decorations, we'll move on. Item three, confirmation of minutes held on the 18th of March. Are you happy for me to sign virtually the minutes of the planning committee held on the 18th of March? If you can unmute and say aye, and if you oppose it, please type in the meeting chat against or abstain.
Aye, aye.
Thank you. Don't have anybody opposing or trying, that's approved. Now moving on to the planning agenda and the planning application. WP 17/00525, that's site R4B1 of the North. Debbie Kirk from the planning department will introduce that for your members.
Thank you Chair. This application relates to site R4B Glenvale Park and is for a reserve matters application pursuant to conditions 4a) the layout, scale, appearance, access and landscaping; 4b) vehicle cycle and foot access, routes and parking; 4c) hard and soft landscaping including boundary treatments and details of street furniture and lighting; 4ac) waste management facilities strategy and waste audit including arrangements for the provision of waste receptacles; 6) accordance with the planning application development framework plan; 31) the nationally described space standards and 32) the nationally national accessibility standards of variations planning permission WP 1600271 VAR for 40 dwellings. There's amended description and plans and design code compliance and access statement. The officer's recommendation is for the reserve matters consent to be granted in relation to access, scale, appearance, layout and landscaping, subject to the conditions set out in the report. Conditions 4a), 4b), 4c), 4ac), 6 and 31 can be partially discharged. The late letters list does apply and there is one speaker, Mr Dan Rickett on behalf of the applicant. And I would remind members that the late letters list and the PowerPoint presentations are on the council's website with the agenda and reports and have been emailed to all members of the planning committee. Thank you.
Thank you Debbie, mute your microphone. Right, can I ask Mr Dan Rickett to speak, please? You have three minutes and this sounds very dark, you can stand or sit as you feel comfortable.
Thank you Chair, I trust the members of the committee can hear me adequately.
Please, I can hear you.
Excellent, thank you. The committee will be aware of the longevity of this application. We've worked collaboratively with the officers of Wellingborough District Council through a number of iterations and adjustments to both the overarching outline planning consent and a number of updates of the associated design code. The applicant has also collaborated with the design team for the adjacent commercial centre site to establish a cohesive and integrated solution to the larger holistic development. We'd like to take this opportunity to highlight the responses to statutory consultees, most notably urban design, highways, landscape and crime prevention. The scheme has been amended repeatedly to incorporate consultancy requirements and has resulted in no statutory objections being raised to the scheme being considered tonight. Visually, we've worked with the case officer and urban design to establish a cohesive contemporary expression in accordance with the design code, predominantly using contrasting brick colours and introducing brick detailing to punctuate design features and create texture. The scheme responds positively to the urban space connection with the commercial centre and contributes to the vibrancy and urban fabric by a variety of details and boundary treatments that have been exhaustively agreed with the LPO. The highways network has been agreed with the county council at both a strategic hierarchical level and at a technical detail level to satisfy the highways departments that our layout is capable of adoption without further design amendment. Landscaping detail has been agreed, including all boundary treatments to both the outlying open spaces and the more challenging internal boundaries with the commercial centre. The landscaping detail also defines the private and defensible spaces around the central news building with private space being afforded on balconies and terraces to each unit to the satisfaction of the crime prevention officer. The scheme sits at an average density for Glenvale Park and in accordance with the design guidance. The scheme also delivers four affordable units, the tenure and mix of which has been agreed with a registered provider and will contribute to the overall requirement for Glenvale Park. We would submit therefore that the scheme responds positively to the site and the particular constraints that it presents. It contributes to a successful collaboration between the commercial centre applicants and ourselves, expertly marshalled and negotiated by the case officer who has been diligent and thorough in her assessment of the merits of the submitted schemes and collaborative and reasonable in our handling of the applications. So we would put forward that you support the officer's recommendation so that we can move the scheme forward to the delivery phases. Thanks very much, thanks Chair, thank you.
Thank you, don't run away. I've got points of clarification for the speaker from members. If you just type in the box if you wish to ask a question. Always takes a bit longer when you're doing it virtually, sort of being saying. I got councillor Griffiths, wish to ask a question?
Not a question of the agent, Mr Chairman, but I've just been told that some viewers can only see your good self and nothing else from this live stream, so I don't know, I think we should carry on, but I think if officers could just have a look at that for us.
Yeah, okay. Officers and tailor, does anybody else wish to ask a question? Right, if you stay on the phone, Mr Rickett, I'll say to the end of the termination and we will let you go. Members, it's over to you, open for debate. Anybody wish to speak? In the box, if you wish to speak? At the moment, no one. I'm also told that the plan should be shown to the members of the public at the moment on the screen. Right, anybody else want to speak? If not, we'll go to the recommendation.
I'd just like to say, let's move to the recommendation, I'm quite happy for that to be seconded.
All right. Do I have a second, sir?
Yes, Chair.
Yeah, aye.
In that case, I'll propose it, councillor Morell.
Councillor Morell, councillor. Right, members, if you're in favour of approving the application, if you all say aye, if you're not, write in the box against or abstain. All in favour, please say aye. Anybody against? Did you write that, I've got one against, do I? Right. Anybody abstaining? Okay, that's approved 10 to 1. That's approved, Mr Rickett, thank you very much. You, I think you'll be removed from the meeting room now. Thank you. Right, moving on to the next planning application, WP 200099, it'll be Debbie Kirk again from the planning department.
Thank you Chair. This application relates to a site for a school, a community centre and area of open space within Glenvale Park, New York Way, Wellingborough and is a reserve matters application pursuant to variation to planning permission reference WP 1600271 VAR. Specifically conditions 4a) the layout, scale, appearance, access and landscaping; 4b) vehicle cycle and foot access, routes and parking; 4c) hard and soft landscaping including boundary treatments and details of street furniture and lighting; 4d) layout and design of public open space; 4aa) layout, design and specification of drainage infrastructure; 4c) waste management facilities strategy and waste audit including arrangements for the provision of waste collection receptacles; 6) accordance with the planning application development framework plan; 10) the structural landscape scheme; 19) the foul water drainage; 20) surface water drainage; 23) sustainability statement for a primary school, a community centre, a preschool, nursery and local children's play area separate to the play provided as part of the primary school comprising of vehicle parking, hard and soft landscaping and areas of hard and soft play at Glenvale Park. It is recommended that reserve matters consent should be granted in relation to access, scale, appearance, layout and landscaping and subject to the conditions set out in the report. Conditions 4a), 4b), 4c), 4d), 4aa), 4ac), 6, 10, 19, 20 and 23 can be partially discharged. The late letters list does not apply and there are two speakers, Mr Greg Pearce, a planner, and Mr Tom Lyons, an architect. The late letters list and the PowerPoint presentations are on the council's website with the agenda and reports and have been emailed to all members of the planning committee. Thank you.
Thank you Debbie, if you could mute your microphone, please. Members, we have Mr Greg Pearce and Mr Tom Lyons who are registered only to answer any points of clarification. So if you can indicate if you wish to ask any questions in the meeting chat box, please. I'm assuming that Mr Greg and Bill are both on the telephone. Right, I've got councillor Graham Lawman wishes to ask one of your question.
Thank you Chairman. In their original response to the design, the county council were quite scathing about the design in terms of efficiency of running a school and value for money. And I note that subsequently, in fact very recently, it's not actually on the portal on this particular application, it's been agreed, but can you tell me, can the architect tell me what changes is made to satisfy the requirements of the county council from the original design?
Hello Chair, it's Tom Lines from GSS Architecture, I take it you can hear me okay?
Yes, yes, go ahead Tom.
Sorry, thank you. Yes, in answer to your question councillor, it's the designs for the school have been developed for a very extremely long period of time and consequently, they've been developed with a range of different officers and representatives of the county council over that period of time. What actually happened, as I'm sure your planning officer will explain, is that the two most recent county council representatives didn't quite understand the original agreement of the county council about how the design should develop. And we did have, your planning officer did set up a specific meeting to talk about these points, which we did and clarified at the time to the satisfaction of the county council.
Okay, councillor Lawman, do you wish to come back?
Well, my question was actually what changes have been made and both of the officers I saw in the correspondence were longstanding county council education officers, so I'm slightly surprised they didn't understand, but I'll take what Mr Lines said, but I'd be interested to know what changes were actually made. Apart from the airlock.
There were some minor changes made to things like colours and some minor details. What was actually explained and their query predominantly was the buildability of the extensions to form a three form entry primary school in the future. So what we did was we explained how that would work and we produced some additional drawings to show how you would access the site, how you would form the site compounds and how you would deliver those extensions in an efficient and cost effective way with the minimal impact on the operation of the existing school. So essentially, it was showing them how you would build those extensions whilst the school was operational without having any impact on the school and then allowing the breakthrough and the connection of those extensions during the summer break. So in other words, we were just demonstrating how you could build those extensions should ever be needed to be a three form entry school in the future without with virtually no impact on the operation and the education that goes on in the school during the term time.
Thank you. Anything else councillor Lawman?
No, thank you.
Right, any of our councillors wish to seek clarification on anything? And I think Danny's IT is working on the problem councillor Griffiths. Right, if you don't mind gentlemen, if you remain online, we're opening it to the committee to make a debate and then we'll come to a decision again. Over to you members of the committee, anybody wish to speak to this? Councillor Morell, please switch your mic on, everybody else should have their mics off, please.
Thank you, Mr Chairman, I would just like to comment on the fact that I'm very pleased to see that both the community facilities and the school facilities are on the same site. I always think that's a very good use of any sort of land area. It does also mean that majority of the noise from young people is kept in one particular place rather than spread over different parts of the estates, so I'm very pleased to see that. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Morell. Councillor Griffiths?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Well, earlier we agreed a further 40 much needed houses and this particular application will see the importance of the other infrastructure that all housing needs, namely a school site, preschool, community centre and footpaths and cycleways. I'm extremely pleased that we are able to consider this tonight in our final year as a borough council and I'm quite happy to move the recommendation as detailed on page 77, Mr Chairman.
Right, thank you very much councillor Griffiths, if you could turn your mics off, please. Anybody else wish to speak to this?
Thank you Chair.
Thank you councillor, go on head councillor Aslan.
Thank you Chair, well looking at the design, I think it's absolutely perfect there for the school, you know, the football pitch day as well, I see that and I'm quite happy with that actually overall and I fully endorse what councillor Griffiths said there and I'm quite happy to second that also.
Thank you councillor. Right, if there's no more speakers, it's been proposed and seconded. All in favour, please say aye, anybody against or abstaining, please indicate in the meeting chat. Anybody against? No, that's carried unanimously. I think Mr Pearce, you need to hang on, you're speaking on the next one.
Yes, that's right, I'll hang on, thank you Chair.
Mr Lyons, thank you for your contribution. Right, moving on to the next application, WP 202100, we'll go over to Debbie Kirk from the planning department who will speak, introduce the the Planning Department, who will speak, introduce the report. Debbie, please.
Thank you, Chair. This application relates to Site 4A, local centre Glenville Park, and is for reserve matters application pursuant to planning permission referenced WP 1600271 VAR. Specifically, conditions 4A, the layout, scale, appearance, access and landscaping; 4B, the vehicle, cycle and foot access routes and parking; 4C, hard and soft landscaping, including boundary treatments; 4D, layout and design of public open space; 4A, layout, design and specification of drainage infrastructure; 4AC, waste management facility strategy and waste audit, including arrangements for the provision of waste collection receptacles; 6, accordance with the Development Framework Plan; 10, structural landscape scheme; 19, foul water drainage; 20, surface water drainage; 23, sustainability assessment for the proposed local centre comprising of 968 square metres of use class A1, food retail and commercial units; 162 square metres of use class A3, food and drink; and five apartments, use class C3; and 538 square metres of use class D, a gym, with associated parking landscape at Glenville Park. It's recommended that reserve matters consent should be granted in relation to access, scale, appearance, layout and landscaping and subject to the conditions set out in the report. Conditions 4A, 4B, 4C, 4D, 4AC, 6, 10, 19, 20 and 23 can be partially discharged. The late letters list does not apply, and there are two speakers, Mr. Greg Pearce, the planner, and Mr. Bill Sung, the architect. And just like to remind members that the PowerPoint presentations are on the council's website with the agenda and reports, and they have been emailed to all members of the Planning Committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. If you could mute your mic, please. We should have Mr. Greg Pearce still with us and Mr. Bill Sung. Hopefully, you're both there.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Members, both gentlemen are here to answer the points of clarification for you. Do you have any you wish to ask? If you can indicate in the meeting chat, please. Anybody?
Yes, Chairman.
Right, who's having a call? Councillor Lawman?
Thank you. I just wanted to ask, Mr. Pearce, the A3 unit, which is Unit 5, I just wanted to be clear that that's not a drive-through facility for the takeaway cafe restaurant. It doesn't look like it is, but I just wanted the clarification of that.
Thank you, councillor. I'm wondering if I could actually just pass that one to Mr. Sung to clarify, if possible.
Yes, thank you, Greg. I would confirm that that unit there is not a drive-through.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Griffiths?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And Greg and Bill, I don't know which one would like to try and answer this, but obviously, one of my normal questions when we get applications of reserve matters like this is time scales and when. And obviously, we are in a situation of post-COVID retail and commercial units in relation to this application are going to be even more important for the future prosperity of our borough. I wonder if you could give some indication to members of the committee as to your anticipated or hopeful time scales for work to begin in respect to this application?
Bill, thank you very much for that question. It's Bill Sung here speaking. I think I would agree with you that obviously the COVID-19 situation that we're in, it's very difficult in terms of commercial circumstances at the moment to precisely predict what will happen six months down the line. But we would anticipate that movement would be taken on site by the first quarter of next year, all things being well, and depending upon how the situation arises with the construction industry as it currently stands. But we would anticipate some movements in the first quarter of 2021.
Thank you. Any further questions, councillor Griffiths? Anybody else seeking points of clarification from the few speakers you have on the phone? Right, it doesn't appear to be any. Gentlemen, Bill and Greg, you like to hang on. I hang on, councillor Aslan. Off you go.
I'm trying.
All right, you can see your hand waving, that works. You wish to ask a question? Go ahead, please, councillor. You've got unmute. Are you unmuted? Try speaking. Yeah, I can see you want to speak, but I can't hear you.
Yeah.
Oh, I can hear you now.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, go and ask your question.
It's just a clarification, actually.
That's all right. Go ahead.
Clarification. Is there any electrical points in that parking areas?
Bill Sung here. Thank you for that question. Yes, there are two electrical parking bays next to the single A3 unit.
Oh, yeah. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have any other questions or points of clarification? Right, if gentlemen, please stay on the phone till the decision's been made. Members of the committee, it's over to you. Anybody wish to speak? Right. Second chance, last chance. Anybody wish to speak? If not, I'll move the recommendation as printed. Do I have a second there?
Aye, Mr. Chairman. Councillor Morell, I'm quite happy to second that.
Thank you. Right, it's proposed and seconded. Those in favour, please say aye. And if you're against, indicate it in the meeting chat or abstain. Those in favour, planning application?
Aye.
Anybody against? Or extensions? Right, that's unanimous. That's 11 for none against, no extensions. That's been approved. Thank you, gentlemen. You will be removed from the meeting by the producer in a couple of moments. Thank you. Moving on to the next planning application, WP 2000131. Her Majesty's Prison. When it gets occupied, I suppose. Officially a former Her Majesty's Prison. Over to Debbie Kirk, who will introduce the report from the Planning Department. Debbie, please.
Thank you, Chair. This application relates to the former Her Majesty's Prison at Miller's Park in Wellumbra, and is an application for the removal and variation of conditions 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 16 and 17 of outline planning permission referenced WP 1600786OUT. The application seeks approval for a revised access design substituting a signalised junction for the originally proposed roundabout arrangement by varying condition number 16. The application, secondly, seeks to remove conditions which refer to an energy centre as this building no longer forms part of the proposals and relates to the removal of conditions 5 and 11. Thirdly, the application seeks to remove the condition which refers to archaeological works as these have now been completed and therefore condition 10 will be removed. Fourthly, the application seeks the removal, to remove the condition which refers to a temporary access as this is not applicable, and so therefore condition 13 is sought to be removed. And finally, the application seeks to reword various conditions to reflect the fact that much of the detailed information required now has been submitted and approved by the local planning authority. And this relates to conditions 3, 4, 6, 7, 8, 12 and 14. The officer's recommendation is to approve subject to the conditions set out in the report. The late letters list does apply and responds to a question which councillor, or a number of questions which councillor Skittle asked. And there is one speaker. And I would remind members that the late letters list and the PowerPoint presentations on this application are on the council's website with the agenda and reports and have been emailed to all members of the Planning Committee. I will now mute. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have one speaker, Mr. Drew. You should be with us now.
Good evening, Chair.
Good evening. I think you're going to speak to the committee and answer questions. You have three minutes. I know this sounds dark, but stand or sit as you feel comfortable in your present situation.
Thank you very much, Chair, and good evening, members. I'm pleased to be able to present to this committee again in my role as planning consultant to Kier. When I previously presented back in November 2018, it was in support of the application for approval of the reserve matters for the new prison. Since then, and as I'm sure you are aware, Kier has made significant progress with the delivery of the new prison. As Kier has progressed with the project, it was instructed by the Ministry of Justice to take on responsibility for the delivery of new operational access from Dodington Road that will serve the prison in due course. Members will hopefully recall that when the outline planning permission was granted by this committee in April 2017, it permitted a temporary construction access in the build phase of the project comprising a simple T junction, which was to then be upgraded to a permanent operational access in the form of a roundabout prior to the prison first being occupied. However, following further review, Kier has identified a signal-controlled arrangement as an alternative to the roundabout and proposes to construct this signalised arrangement instead. The principal purpose of the application before you tonight is therefore to amend the outline planning permission to commit that alternative arrangement. The signal-controlled junction has been designed by Transport Engineers at Arrock, and importantly, the design has been considered acceptable by Northamptonshire Highways officers in both, in respect of both highway safety and capacity. The new arrangement will still result in the prison being accessed directly from Dodington Road, thereby maintaining one of the key outcomes of the outline consent by removing main operational traffic from Miller's Park. The other amendments to the outline planning permission are, as Mrs. Kirk has explained, simply to reflect that A, Kier is discharged for necessary conditions before building the new prison, and B, in some cases, conditions were no longer relevant because they related to an energy centre building, which no longer forms part of the new development. In summary, then, this application seeks to achieve an amended operational access whilst maintaining highway safety and keeping operational traffic away from Miller's Park, an important principle established at outline stage. With these points in mind, I respectfully request that members approve this application. Thank you.
All right, thank you. If you stay there and stay online with us, I've got a number of members who want to seek points of clarification. Councillor Maguire first? You can unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. Yes, I just want to ask a gentleman one question, if possible. We've got a picture up at the moment of Turnon Mill Lane with all the cars backed up. Is it still under the planning application that we will be having a mini roundabout there?
Yes, councillor, that's correct. So the application tonight doesn't change the intention to form the mini roundabout at the junction of Dodington Road and Turnus Mill Lane.
Thank you very much. And then, Chair, when it comes to it, I do welcome this. It'd be great. Just, do you know on the time limit when that's going to be done? Because that was part of that before. Is that going to happen before the site actually opens? Or will we have to wait for that to be done?
The councillor, the trigger for implementing that mini roundabout is prior to the prison first becoming operational. That was established on the outline permission and wouldn't change as a consequence of this application.
Thank you very much for answering my question.
That's okay.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Skittle?
Yes, I'd just like to thank the officers and applicant for the clarification around the traffic light system. And it does delay my concerns to have a proper understanding of how it would work. I think, referring back to Turnus Mill Lane, it could actually improve the flow of vehicles out of there to have the roundabouts. So we might actually have a bit less queuing coming out of Turnus Mill Lane.
All right, thank you. Did you want to again speak, councillor Maguire? I've put you down twice, or you're happy? Okay, moving on then, I've got councillor Lawman. Sorry, who's that?
Barry Graves.
I'll come to you in a minute, councillor Graves. I've got councillor Lawman on my list.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, I just wanted to comment, and I would have hoped that we would have had an energy centre on there because it sounds as something that might have been useful in the current climate. But I'm agnostic about whether we have a traffic lights or a roundabout there. But one thing that has changed, the northbound bus stop has moved from the other side of the access to the crematorium to on the bend, and it moved a bit nearer the prison. And I wondered whether Kier, when they talked to Kier WSP, could consider having that offset, which is what's happened on the southbound bus stop. So it's offset, so it's off the carriageway. It just occurs to me that being on the carriageway, cars might be tempted to overtake it on a bend and so on, and it will also impede traffic. So whilst we've got this plan here, it might be something that in their discussions in finalising the scheme, they could perhaps look at for us, please.
Right, I'm sure that the speakers will take that on board, councillor Lawman. Councillor Scarborough, please.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, Mr. Drew, could you give me a bit more background, please, about why this arrangement is better for you than the roundabout arrangement that was previously proposed? I didn't really pick that up either from the papers or from your presentation.
No, that's, sorry, councillor, did you add more to the question? Sorry.
No, no, just why does it that this works better for you?
So my client took an instruction from the Ministry of Justice last year to look at the access designs. It had a different technical team on board to the one which was advising the Ministry of Justice directly. Kier's technical team reviewed the proposed access roundabout solution and had some queries about the way that that would operate, which discussions with the technical team advising the Ministry of Justice didn't fully allay or respond to. The technical team advising Kier concluded that the signalised junction could still accommodate the volume of traffic that is expected to be generated by the new prison without any impacts on highway capacity or highway safety. And so Kier has an agreement with the Ministry of Justice proposed to bring forward this alternative arrangement.
Right. If I may have a supplemental, Chair?
By all means, councillor.
Yeah. No, I understand that entirely. But what I'm interested in is what is it? It's not so much that it can work. Why does it work better when it will clearly act to impede more traffic going up and down Dodington Road, which is obviously a concern for the general population? I was kind of expect to hear something about moving heavy goods vehicles in and out and it'd be easier with lights, but you've not really given me any reason why this is a better but you've not really given me any reason why this is a better solution.
So it, it's not a question, councillor, perhaps to put a side by side comparison, saying is one better than the other? It's a question of is the arrangement that's on the table this evening acceptable? Um, from a highway's, um, development management perspective? Um, and from a, uh, looked at critically from the impacts on highway safety and the way in which the network would operate. Um, the access, the revised access arrangement is, um, is, is acceptable. Um, that is a conclusion which is supported by the, um, by the county council, um, in its role as, uh, as highway authority.
Right. So you're either not prepared to tell us why this is an improvement or it isn't an improvement, but it's just something you want to do? Is that the position?
Councillor, I'm not, I'm not trying to, um, to be, um, disingenuous with you at all. It's, uh, it's an alternative junction, um, and assessed on its own merits. It's, uh, it, it's an acceptable arrangement which, um, which Kier has put on, on the table. Um, as I say, it's, it's not explicitly about wanting to compare one over the other and say that it is an improvement. Um, it is a, it is a simply an alternative arrangement which has been progressed following review by the technical team advising the contractor who is building the prison, um, which has been tested and as I say, on its own merits has been, has been considered acceptable.
Uh, thank, thank you very much, John. I, I understand your point entirely. Um, it would seem to me the only really reason, reasons for doing something like this would be either it's better or it's cheaper. Um, I'm going to assume it's the, the latter rather than the former. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Graves, please.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Chairman. Um, this is, this must be good news, of course, for the residents of Millers Park who've had several years upheaval, first with the demolition of the old prison and then the construction. Um, at the moment, we're receiving, uh, admittedly not a, not a high volume, but traffic using the village of Dodington, uh, entering and, uh, and exiting the prison site. I'm just wondering what, if any, measures can be in place to deter that with this traffic light system to stop traffic as a shortcut or whatever going through the village because it, we, I must, don't want to see that increase. Um, and it's been, we've been very good so far. I just wondered if there could be any measures to stop that.
Thank you. Mr Drew, do you?
Um, so I, I would respond to that, councillor, by saying that, um, the trip distribution around the network, um, was tested, um, during the determination of the outline planning application. Um, there is a full transport assessment that was submitted with that, uh, with that application, which looked at the number of, um, the number of trips which would arise from, from the new development and how that would, um, then, or how those vehicles would then move through the network in the, in the local area. Um, the arrangement that's on the table now, um, of the signalised junction instead of roundabout doesn't, doesn't alter that trip distribution analysis. Um, so at, at line stage, there is, um, there is no need identified to, um, to put in other measures. Um, other than those which, uh, which form part of the proposals, which is the reduction in the speed limit from forty to thirty miles an hour. Um, the, the mini roundabout at the junction of Dodington Road, um, and, uh, and Turners Mill Lane and, and the bus stops. And that remains the, um, the package of, of upgrades to the, um, to the highway network.
Okay. Do you wish to come back, councillor Graves? Oh, yeah. Right, okay. Uh, I've got councillor Griffiths. Do you wish to get a point of clarification?
No, Chairman, mine is after the points of clarification.
Uh, councillor Lawman?
Thank you, Chairman. Sorry, I, I, uh, forgot one point, but, but, um, the answer to councillor Graves' question might be that the sign is saying all routes, um, right out of the prison. Um, that would be sensible anyway. But, but my point was, I've had, this is in my county division, I've had a number of, uh, people, um, ask, uh, if, um, or to be reassured that Kier will maintain the newsletters and public relations. There was a bit of a hiatus when they didn't get any information for a while. Uh, and, um, uh, there has been a newsletter recently, but can we be assured that they'll get the regular ones? Um, that coming, um, and funnily enough, I've just had a, a note come off my screen. One of the residents is just asking, saying that will traffic out of Millers Park be impeded by traffic backing up? Um, but perhaps you'd like to comment on that because that's one of the residents just asking me that.
Mr Drew?
Uh, thank you, Chair, and, and thank you for your question, councillor Lawman. Um, so I'll, I'll, I'll take those in, in, um, in reverse order. So the, the, the transport note which is, um, has been submitted with this application, um, shows that on the, uh, the southbound arm, um, of the, uh, of Dodington Road, um, at most there would be a queue of, of four, four vehicles which would not extend past the, um, uh, the Millers Park junction. So there would be no, um, impediment to, um, to, to vehicles, uh, wishing to egress out of, out of Millers Park. Um, and I must confess apologies. Could you repeat your, your, the first question that you asked me, please?
Um, that's, well, I'll say first of all, the resident thanks you for that answer. The, the, the first bit was to have an all routes, um, highway sign coming out of, uh, the prison and the, and the, um, um, I'm asking myself now, and, oh, and the, and the regular updates, the newsletter, just to be assured. That may not be your route, your role, but if your message could go back.
Of course, I mean, so I think Kier has, um, enjoyed a, a generally positive relationship with residents of Millers Park, um, in terms of lines of communication throughout, throughout the project. Um, but I will certainly, um, I will pass that message back to, um, back to Kier, um, on, on both points that you've, you've raised there.
Thank you very much. Uh, I've got councillor Ausland. Un-mic yourself and then speak, please. All right, I'll come back to you. Councillor Skittle, you've got a point of supplementary clarification.
Yes, thank you. Um, the, the, uh, the point that councillor Lawman raised about the, uh, northbound bus stop, um, that is followed fairly soon by a splitter island. And, and even that traffic will try and squeeze past the bus on, on the hatching. Um, is the splitter island there to, to make sure that's unsuccessful? Or, um, or what is its intention in that location?
The councillor, the, um, I, I'll deal with the, the point generally, that one and the one which councillor Lawman raised, which is, um, that at, um, outline planning stage, as councillor Lawman, um, correctly noted, the, uh, the bus stop was shown on the, uh, the, the access drawings to be located south of the, uh, the crematorium access. It's now located, um, just slightly north of it. Um, what is probably important to note is that on the outline planning application access drawings, the, the northbound bus stop was set in the road. There wasn't, there was no layby. So in, in that regard, the, uh, the current proposals are the same as the, uh, as the outline, um, outline access arrangements. Um, the movement from a location just south of the crematorium access to one just north, um, actually was, um, or emerged from discussions between Kier and Northamptonshire County Council in its role as highway authority. Um, and it was at the, uh, the county council's request that the, uh, that the bus stop was, was realigned or repositioned to be north of the crematorium access, um, on the basis that it would be in a location which would discourage, um, overtaking manoeuvres, um, on, on the bend.
Nice. Thank you. Councillor Ausland, can you hear me now?
No, I cannot unmute.
We can hear you. Ask you a question.
My question has been just answered by councillor Skittle, actually, uh, regards to the bus stop. That's all. I have serious concern regards to the safety of, well-being of the passengers and the community.
All right, thank you. Councillor Lawman?
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, if I could come back on that, I think my point was that if it's on the bend, traffic coming down won't see that there's a splitter and won't see traffic coming around. But if there's a stationary bus, there will probably, there's some idiots around, still try and overtake it. Whereas on the straight, they would have been able to see. Um, so there is a safety implication there, which is, um, I'm not suggesting we, we, we force it, but I would ask the engineers to look at that, um, you know, um, a, as closely as they can on those bases. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sure that will be looked at and the planning officer concerned will raise it again outside of this meeting. Uh, councillor Tim Maguire, do you wish to speak or ask a question of clarification?
Yes, please, Mr Chairman.
Go ahead, Tim.
It's regarding the councillor, what, the question what councillor Lawman said regarding the newsletters. Yeah. My ward borders, um, Turners Mill Lane, my Wellingborough Park, my ward, um, the John Lear Estate and all that. And I do have, um, residents contacting me on a regular basis regarding the development of the prison. And I try to give them as much advice as I can. And I have got, um, a good rapport with some of the residents there regarding the development. And we haven't, to be honest, we haven't had many complaints at all regarding this development. Um, but it will do. I'll try to answer them as best as I can. Um, as a ward councillor, I would like to have the Kier update as well. I haven't had any information, um, since we last had, um, the prison talk to us at the council. And that's a few months ago. So if they could copy the, the ones that border, I know, I'm sure councillor Graves would be interested in this, um, because his ward and my part of my ward are the closest to the prison site. I thought I would let to say, Chairman, thank you for allowing me to come back in.
Okay, thank you. I'm sure that will be taken up. I just want to check. Councillor Ausland, you back in all right? Right. Any other points of clarification? No, uh, you, sir, Mr Drew, like to hang on and listen to the end of the debate till we finish the decision?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Thank you, members.
Members, it's over to you. Anybody wish to speak or pass any comments on the planning application before you? Councillor Maguire, I can see you. That's excellent. Go on.
All, all I'd like to say is we, um, you know, as this site gets better, um, better built and everything. Um, yeah, there is TV problems, but they've, um, it's coming on well. And I'd like to, uh, propose that we go ahead with these planning, uh, these, these planning applications tonight. Um, because I think, you know, the lights and everything and the roundabouts at, at Turner Mill Lane and the bus stop, you know what I mean, that's going to benefit not just the prison, that will benefit the crematorium and people if they want to go to the Mary, Mary Miller and the garden centre. So I think it's time we just, um, pass this application. I'm ready to propose it, Chair.
Right, thank you. Got to move. When that noise disappears. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr Chairman. And, um, I actually welcome the highways improvements. I believe they are improvements to the, uh, original ones. And I agree with councillor Maguire. The key, um, about, uh, the, uh, roundabout at the top of Turners Mill Lane i- is equally as important to, uh, to, to traffic flow. Uh, I would, um, point out that there have been thousands, if not tens of thousands of tonnes of materials that have been delivered to this site, um, with only, uh, minimal inconvenience to residents. We know there have been, but I would like to congratulate Kier for the way that they've dealt with those matters and communicating with the people of Millers Park and, and, and around that area. Um, Mr Man, uh, Mr Chairman, members, this is the, one of the biggest projects, a two hundred and fifty three million pound project, um, entirely funded by government money. Um, it's going to give a huge boost to the local economy. Uh, back in the day, uh, to remind everybody that this borough was awarded, uh, this flagship prison, not just because we had excellent transport links, not just because we had a prison previously on that site and the land was owned by the government, not just because we have a brilliant planning team, but also we reflected a willingness to work, uh, together to deliver this project. And, uh, I know councillor Graves and councillor Scarborough were involved from the very early days. Um, the topping out ceremony for the prison was delayed due to COVID. Um, but, uh, we look forward to the time when we can get our boots and hats on uh, and, and, and carry out the topping out and also the naming of this, uh, brilliant facility, uh, Mr Chairman.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Ausland? Right. And then I've got councillor Scarborough.
Yes, tha- thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Chairman. Um, well, I can't disagree with anything that councillor Griffiths has said about the, the merits of the, the new prison, um, uh, for the borough of Wellingborough. I think it's a splendid project. I think though, ha- having heard the debate, um, I think it's a pity that we're going to take the gills off the gingerbread a bit here if we approve this by supporting a suboptimal highway solution, which will, I believe, store up trouble in the medium to long term for just the people that I think councillor Maguire was referring to with the users of the garden centre, uh, the Miller and indeed the residents of Great Dodington. I suspect this will produce traffic difficulties of the sort described by the resident in Millers Park, which would have been avoided with the previous solution. Um, accordingly, I shall be voting against this. I think that it may well be an acceptable solution, but it's certainly suboptimal. In my view, it's a shame.
All right. Thank you very much, councillor. Councillor Morrell?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Uh, the only concern I have is that not having that bus bay on that corner is a really incorrect decision. Uh, I follow those buses through that village quite regularly. And where the cor- where, where they're not in the best possible place, they do have a bus bay. Where the road is fairly straight and you can see the traffic either way, then they may be on the pavement side. That one is on a bend and I think that everything should be done to see if we can actually put a, a, a bus bay in there to keep the bus off that corner so that traffic can pass it safely. Uh, I do have some feelings for councillor Scarborough's comments. Um, but I think at the end of the day, if the traffic lights can be timed so that when there's nothing going in and out of the prison, that they're basically permanently green, uh, like the ones on, uh, Dodington Road crossroads with, um, Croyland Road, that at least at certain times of the day, if you come start to drive towards them, they will change automatically to, to meet you. Um, but I certainly think the best bay is something that is really essential to make that a safe place to stop. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chair. Can I pop in?
Of course you can, councillor.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, thank you, thank you, Chair. Uh, I've been trying to unmute the mic for a few minutes. It was not working. Uh, again, I have a serious reservation as regards to this bus stop and it's still going into my head all the time. And I have, uh, honestly, they need to do something about it. They need to have that bay there further back a little bit, the actual stop as well. And again, I echo what's been said and also I would really like to see some sleeping policemen there as well to slow the traffic down even more because of that bend there. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak?
Yes, can I please jump in?
Yes, by all means, councillor.
No sleeping, no sleeping policeman. Thank you very much. That, the traffic speed on that corner is very seldom forty miles an hour because most people haven't realised that they've left a thirty mile an hour area for about four hundred yards before they go back into a thirty mile an hour area. So certainly no sleeping policeman. Thank you very much.
Right, thank you. Uh, anybody else wish to speak? Councillor Lawman?
No, no, I'm just pointing out you can't have one on certain roads. No, no, I'm just pointing out you can't have one on certain roads.
Right, thank you very much. Anybody else wish to speak? I'm sure the agent's been, had his attention drawn to your concerns about the bus layby. I'm sure they'll relook at it again. And I'm sure the planning department will speak to them outside of this meeting. If there's no one else to speak, I've had a pose up and councillor McGuire, do I have a second to approve this?
Yes, seconded.
Thank you, councillor Lawman. Usual procedure, those in favour say aye. If you oppose it, please indicate in the chat. So those in favour of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody against, please indicate in the meeting chat. Thank you, councillor. Anybody else? If not, that's 10 to 1 and that's approved. Thank you, Mr. Drew. And I'm sure you'll take away the comments of the planning committee about the bus layby.
You said you will, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Right. Now moving on to WP 2000244. And this one.
Chairman, I have to look.
You're leaving us, aren't you, councillor Lawman, for a moment?
Text message to come back.
All right, we will text you for the last one. Thank you. Right, Debbie Kirk from the planning department will introduce this report.
Thank you, Chair. This application relates to land between the rear of 30 to 50 Dodington Road in Woolaston and is for a proposed industrial commercial building, use class B1, B2, B8, including non-hazardous waste transfer, storage and recycling and a storage yard. The officer's recommendation is that an objection is raised to the proposed development due to a conflict with adopted planning policy. The late letters list does not apply and there is one speaker, Mr. Mitchell from Woolaston Parish Council. The late letters list and the PowerPoint presentation are on the council's website with the agenda and reports and have been emailed to all members of the planning committee. I'm going to mute now. Unmute now. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mitchell. I hope you're with us now.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
You have three minutes to speak to the committee. As I've said in the past, if you wish to stand or sit down, whichever makes you feel comfortable tonight.
Thank you very much. Good evening. I'm speaking on behalf of Woolaston Parish Council, who strongly oppose this application of a waste recycling business on this land at Dodington Road. The council claims that the following policies to be in conflict with this application. The Northamptonshire Joint Course Strategy Policy 5, which is flood risk, the Core Strategy Policy 11, which is rural development, the Northamptonshire Minerals and Waste Local Plan, Policy 11, which is rural hinterlands, but most importantly, Woolaston Neighbourhood Plan, Policy E1, concerning this land at Dodington Road. Now, in the time I have available, I'll just limit that to highlighting the conflict with Policy E1 of Woolaston Neighbourhood Plan. And whilst Policy E1 allocates this land for employment purposes for all the B categories, parish council disputes this application being categorised within B2, general industrial use. The applicant has included the term sui generis, which use class is not permitted by the neighbourhood plan. Furthermore, neighbourhood plans are not able to designate land for any waste-related business and no, certainly that was never the intention for the use of this land. The designation of this land is to support small-scale locally arising needs and this application in front of you has no bearing whatsoever on local needs. Item 1 of Policy E1 states, demonstrate that the development will be safe for its lifetime, will not increase flood risk elsewhere and where possible, reduce flood risk overall. The National Planning Policy Framework states that developments should be steered towards areas of low-risk flooding and we therefore dispute the statement by the applicant that the majority of the site is at low risk of surface flooding. Much of the site is located within flood zones 2 and 3. And during the consultation stage of the neighbourhood plan, the Environment Agency advised that only land within 70 metres of Dodington Road is located outside the functional floodplain and this land particularly measures 0.73 hectares, which is just about one-third of the overall site. Both the Environment Agency and the local lead flood authority have indicated insufficient information has been provided. Now, item 4 of Policy E1 states satisfactory measures to be taken to ensure proposals will not have any unacceptable impact on highway infrastructure. Now, the parish council opposes the view of the applicant that the associated traffic movements of heavy goods vehicles, lorries and cars, totaling a minimum of 278 movements each day, to be insignificant. Dodington Road is an unclassified road with two single file bridges at either end, with one bridge at Hardwater Mill restricted by a seven and a half ton weight restriction, requiring all of the heavy goods vehicles and lorries to access the site via the Cobbs Lane Roundabout and the single file bridge. 270 tonnes of waste is forecast to be delivered to this site daily. So extra traffic as a result of this application, which includes 24 articulated lorry movements daily, will in our opinion have a very significant impact. So to conclude, this site is not suitable for the purposes of this application. The Woolaston Neighbourhood Plan does not make provision for any waste recycling activity or sui generis class use and look to this committee to support your officers in their recommendation to make an objection. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. If you stay on the line, please. Any member wish for points of clarification from Mr. Mitchell? No? Right, we're going to the debate. Members wish to speak and debate this matter, please? If we don't, then I'll go straight to the recommendation. Right, it's been recommended to raise the objection.
Chairman, there's several requests to speak.
Councillor Skutrell, you come up now. That's all right.
Yes, I looked at the recommendation and in a way I'd like to add to it in that point 1 of Policy E1, you know, it's be safe. Local transfer station and storage stations, we seem to have repeated fires at them. And so I'm not at all sure that it would be safe from that angle. And also, point 8 is that it should minimise the visual impact of the development on the countryside. These stations tend to have huge piles of waste, which is not exactly attractive in the countryside. So I think, if anything, we've understated our objection.
All right, thank you. Councillor McGuire?
Can you hear me, Chair?
Yes.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. I must agree with the man from Woolaston Parish Council regarding this because there's traffic movement, whichever it goes on to Dodington Road and then it goes either to the south. If it's going towards the motorway, it's going to go through, it's going to bypass Bowyer and then it's going to go on and through Tony, which is a village or a little town. And then if it's going to go to the north, it's going to go through Urchester, little, I meant little Urchester, bit of Urchester to get onto the A45, whichever way it's going to go. There's a lot of traffic movements regarding this. And also, you know, as he said, it is a single narrow bridge as you come out of Dodington Road to the roundabout. There's a lot of traffic on that 509, whatever day, whatever time of day you go. And that is more concerning as well, you know what I mean? Councillor Skutrell brings up a bit about the waste. Sometimes it's an eyesore. You already got to look at the one on the A45 with the mounds and everything. And we can see this happening and just people who go to Woolaston and walk that way and the fishing lake's not far away. I don't know what the smell and the environment or what impact's going to be, but that ought to take into consideration. And I'll be backing the recommendations as I offer is to refuse this application. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. Councillor Morrell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to continue with that particular conversation. It is totally incorrect to build that there. It's totally in the wrong place. I can't imagine that number of articulated lorries trying to get over that small bridge without tailbacking on occasions back onto the main road. It's not as if they can go the other way because the hard water crossing and the bridges down there are not suitable for that sort of vehicle. You don't want to start them trying to run through Grenden and places like that. So totally the wrong place, shouldn't even be considered. And I certainly will be going with the officer's recommendations. In fact, I'm quite happy to propose it.
Right, thank you. Our councillor Griffiths to speak next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And having listened to the debates, I think councillor Mitchell from Woolaston Parish Council has summed it up extremely well and obviously has done considerable amount of research into this. The phrase that touches with me is small-scale local needs. This would be a large-scale development. And, you know, the traffic concerns me greatly. I use this road very often. And as has been mentioned, you've got single-lane bridge, single-file bridges in close proximity. And then you've got always the temptation of vehicles wanting to go through Grenden, which again wouldn't be suitable. Obviously, members will probably know that close to this site, it was chosen to house a temporary mortuary. I'm pleased that that has now, thankfully, been able to close and I think that is a positive thing. But that put quite a strain on traffic in that area. Imagine what this could do to the quality of life for residents of Woolaston and people that use that road. As far as the recommendation is concerned, Mr. Chairman, I would move that we raise strong objection with Northamptonshire County Council, but I might not seek a second to that amendment. I don't know.
Right, thank you. Councillor Scarborough, please.
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, I would very happily second councillor Griffiths' proposal, which followed up on councillor Skutrell's suggestion that we should beef up the objection in the strongest terms on this. This is quite a shocking application in many ways. It was a brave decision by the Woolaston Neighbourhood Plan, I think, to designate this land for value-adding local small-scale commercial activity while being sensitive to the floodplain of the Woolaston Brook. That was a piece of imaginative neighbourhood planning. And I have no doubt when they did that, they didn't dream for an instant that the sort of application they get on this site was a monstrosity like this. And I think that the policy argument has been made thoroughly. It's been accepted by the Borough Council, as I think it should be. And I think as members, we should back up the Woolaston Neighbourhood Plan so they can get what they're seeking to achieve in this place. I would echo the comments of other councillors about the traffic impacts. And I have to say, I read the highways start with interest because it raises a whole series of reasons why this is incredibly awkward, particularly in terms of vehicle manoeuvring of heavy goods vehicles. And then says no objection, which frankly baffles me. At risk of taking members back many, many years, I remember having exactly the same discussion about heavy goods vehicles from quarry site P14 at Bowyer, heading for the gravel plant down Hardwater Road. We lost that one. I certainly hope we don't lose this one. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Absen?
Thank you, Chair. I think most of it's already been said, quite good, well-mannered. And wrong place, absolutely catastrophic for the area and especially the Dodington side of it. And I will fully echo what has been said and I will be totally against this. And we need to absolutely burp this home to say no. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members? Right, we do have an amendment to put, I think, if councillor Griffiths is right, very strongly object?
Can I just come in first and say that I know I proposed it? I'm more than happy to propose it with those extra words.
Right. Can we just confirm the words, please, councillor Griffiths, if you can unmute?
Very strong objection, Mr. Chairman.
Right. And that's been seconded by councillor Scarborough and the proposal and seconded are happy?
Yes.
Right, that's the proposal before us. All in favour, please say aye. If you oppose it, please put in the.
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody against? No, that's carried unanimously. So I think we've got the extra words. And any clarification, we'll double check afterwards. Right, if we can recall councillor Lawman, then we can go to the next item. Can you text him if you're ready, please? Sorry about this. It's not as easy as going to the door and calling him back in. Well, for me, it's about true.
I've texted councillor Lawman and asked him to come back in.
Okay, we'll wait till he joins us and then we can carry on. You're not councillor Lawman? Is he back yet?
Probably ringing.
I've sent him a text message.
Okay. Welcome back, councillor Lawman. You'll just see, we've had a problem with the slides. They've just crashed. It's the technology. So you've got your own copies of the last bit. So we'll now move on to planning application, WP 2000068. Debbie Kirkwood from the planning department will introduce this item. Over to you, Debbie, please.
Thank you, Chair. This application relates to land to the rear of 117 Dodington Road in Elsbarton and is for the erection of a one and a half-storey, three-bedroom dwelling. The officer's recommendation is to approve planning permission subject to the conditions set out in the report. The late letters list does not apply and there are no speakers. And I would just remind members that the PowerPoint presentation is on the council's website with the agenda and reports have been emailed to all members of the planning committee. Thank you. I'll now mute.
Thank you. It's over to you, members. Everybody wish to speak?
I think you'll find I'm already there.
Right.
May I speak, Mr. Chairman?
Of course you may, councillor, as it's your.
Thank you very much. I do believe that the parish council were as recommended that this didn't go ahead. Now, I know their policy normally is that if there are a number of village people who do not like a particular thing, they will often put that request forward. I know that this particular site has already had planning approval before for quite a bit bigger property. And I feel that if any way that this was refused on this occasion, they would go straight off to our friends in Bristol and automatically get it overturned because once it's had planning consent, it's only run out of time. It hasn't changed, as in the building's slightly smaller. So I'm afraid I can't go along with my parish on this particular one. I fear we have to go with the recommendation.
Right here. Councillor Stevenson, would you like to speak?
Yes, yeah, thank you. I'm the ward councillor for Elsbarton, so I know this property really well. It's in the road in which I live. And I think I agree with councillor Morrell. I mean, there's a lot of properties that have been divided in this way, in this road. The fact that planning permission was given already in 2012, even though it was lapsed, and the fact that there's permission. even though it was lapsed, and the fact that there's permission for a similar property next door means that I would also have to support the officer's recommendation on this.
Thank you councillor Scarborough.
Thank you, thank you, Chairman. I'll formally second councillor Morrell's proposal that we accept this. A bit reluctantly because no one likes garden grabbing, but the boat has sailed in that part of Barton, I'm afraid, as councillor Stevenson rightly said. And we wouldn't have a hope at all of any sort at appeal.
All right, thank you. Councillor Lawman?
Thank you, Chairman. I was going to say exactly that's the worst example, another bad example of garden grabbing. But, and I was going to say, if there was any way we can find a way to do a site visit on sites like this in the near future, we should because it's exactly the sort of one where you get, that's the only way you get the real feel for it. But having listened to the two ward councillors who obviously know the site better and know the area better, I'll defer to their superior knowledge because I would have said some of the, obviously Elsbarton neighbourhood plan has come in since that, presumably since the previous one was agreed, and I don't know how that would have affected it. But if they're in favour, then I'll abstain from it.
Thank you councillor Lawman. On the point of site viewings, we will start site viewings when we're permitted to by Her Majesty's Government. I don't think we can make the two metre wall at the moment.
You can go on your own.
Yeah, go on your own. Don't mean stopping you visit on your own, but we can't go as a group at the present time. Does anyone else wish to speak on this?
Can I come back?
Of course you may councillor.
Thank you. I tend to agree with everybody else. I don't like garden grabbing. I think I was against this particular project when it came the last time. Personally, I'm still against it, but I understand under planning law, there's little or no reason that we just don't have to go with it because it's already had, it's been approved. I can't remember whether it actually went to Bristol last time. I can't remember on that one, but anyway, it's reluctant that I would put it to go ahead.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak? If not, it's been proposed and seconded. Those in favour, please say aye. Those against? Anybody against, please indicate in the chat section for me. Unanimous. Councillor, I have one extension, so there's 10 for one extension. That recommendation has been approved. Right. We've now got all the planning applications listed. Please also note at the back of the green sheets, the planning applications, that we're under delegated powers, building regulation approvals. And we come to appeal letters, item 5. You'll see we've had three appeals. Oveston Lakes, that's dismissed. 34 Castle Street was approved. And land adjacent to railway and 136 Cornerfield Nursery High Street, relation with Urchester was dismissed. So two to one on that. It was very well done. And many thanks to officers again for those appeal work they done on that. I have no other business, so I will declare the meeting closed. And I think it's eight twenty five. Hang on, hang on. And I bid you a good night, but please remind you to leave the meeting quietly and properly and lock yourselves out. Thank you.
Mr Chairman, I think councillor Scarborough and councillor Skittles wish to speak.
Okay.
Do they?
Do you? Go ahead.
It's about the appeal that we lost in Castle Street. I was very disappointed, particularly in that the inspector dismissed concerns about safety of parking, even though our minutes noted that it was a hotspot for car-related crime and damage. I think that councillor was councillor Scarborough, if I remember rightly.
Councillor Scarborough?
Yes, well, yes, actually, there were two things I was going to quickly mention. That was one. I think that's the most regrettable decision. I think the response of the inspector to, in general, to the concerns of the residents was extremely dismissive. He called them anecdotal and relied on a parking survey that we as the planning committee had said needed to be redone because it wasn't appropriate. I think that was a very disappointing decision. And I think the residents of Castle Street can feel justifiably aggrieved. The, I did have one very quick question on the matters under delegated powers. It's not for answer tonight, but could the officer please let us have a note 196 Hinnick Road, Woolaston, change of use of a residential annex to a dwelling? Now, we're not very keen on residential annexes turning into dwellings at this council, so it would be useful to know what the circumstances of that were, please. I don't need it tonight, but a written report on what that was all about would be very useful, I think.
Okay, thank you. And yet again, I thank the officers for their hard work tonight and especially the planning team who have done something completely different in whatever. I'm sure it's probably better now elsewhere, but we've got the way to go.
Yeah, yeah.
And your support. Thank you.
And Mr Chairman, it didn't take much longer than it would have done if we'd been in the chamber. And some of our other councils nearby.
I'd already referred to that. They're still talking.
Sorry, I beg your pardon.
They're still talking. Thank you. Goodnight.
Away you go, get a massage.